Stand will be made in order by County Court of Law Judge Joshua Winters.
Let me please, Father God, we come to you this month of Thanksgiving with thankful hearts, Lord, thank you for the many blessings you've given to our Lord. Just allow us in our hearts to use this time that our nation and our state and our county reflect on the many ways that we are blessed. To be able to assemble in this fashion, Lord, to be able to invoke your name at the beginning of our efforts here on behalf of the citizens of this county and this state, Lord. Yes, that each of the things that happened in our county government, in our state government, in our national government, be the honor of the Lord. For being with each of those that are here blessed and service that are serving here. Allow peace and harmony prevail in all of you who worship in your name and pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
I call the order of the regular meeting of the Van Zant County Commissioners Court on Wednesday, November the tenth, twenty twenty-one, at nine oh three AM. Announced form is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meetings of the Commissioners Court and approval of same for October the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Do move. Got a motion by Commissioner Milton?
Um, I've got to do some correcting on those, so if I need to table.
We need to table?
Yeah, we need to table.
I'm making a motion, we table it. Okay, withdraw the first motion?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Milton to table item number two. Is there a second by Commissioner West? Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Item number two is tabled. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner West.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion on the bills that's been submitted for payment? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted.
So move Pearson.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaFret. Any questions or discussion on the bills that's been ratified? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Any general business? Is there any general business, any announcements anyone has that would like to make?
I'd like to make an announcement. We're, we're having our annual Veterans Memorial Event on the eleventh tomorrow at eleven o'clock at the Van Zant County Veterans Memorial. Invite everybody to attend.
I hear there's a good speaker.
I don't know him.
I heard he's a little weak.
A little weak. He used to though. They asked me to speak there, but yeah, it's a great, it's a great celebration of our veterans and everything we have. We owe them to God. And any other announcements from anyone needs to be made? Any general business or anything? Being none, we'll move to public comments. Anyone sign up for public comments?
No one here.
No one signed up or just?
We have somebody in, but I messaged them, tell me who they are if they want to speak on.
Okay, maybe. Okay, we'll, we'll see. We do have a public hearing in just a little bit. And I think there's going to be a lot of speakers when we do the public hearing. We'll have them state their name and everything. And uh, Susan and Jennifer, if you'll keep record of the names of who's speaking, that's in the, the public hearing. Okay, but they haven't identified themselves, what they want to speak on. Okay. We have no public comments at this time. I would like to move item number ten. And let's go ahead and move to item number ten, discuss and consider award of the contract for the Van Zant County Community Block, uh, Community Developed Block Grant seven two two zero four eight zero regarding improvements for the Fruitvale Water Supply.
Good morning. How are y'all doing?
We're doing good.
My name's Jacob Dupree. I'm with Dunaway DBI. We're the engineers for Fruitvale Water System. This is Jonathan. I think y'all mentioned y'all have a recommendation letter, the copy out on.
Exactly.
Perfect. So we're here for the award for the community development block grant that Van Zant is hosting for Fruitvale Water System. We opened up bids for this waterline project last week on Friday. The low bidder was J and J R Construction in the amount of two hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty cents. So the grant amount is actually two hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred for construction funds. So there's a little bit of an overage. Judy with Fruitvale is here as well. She had a board meeting Monday. And her board has committed to paying the overage. They want to go ahead and see this project through. It's a good construction project for them to serve some kind of underutilized areas as far as water lines and everything goes. And so we recommend that this project be awarded to J and J R Construction in the amount of two hundred ninety-six thousand contingent that Fruitvale go ahead and pay the overage.
I'm like the motion is such, sir, from Calvin and Judy is going to be a good project and there's a few other things in area they're adding to it as well.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Got your motion. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Flat, second by Commissioner Milton. Those few other things, were they in the bid?
I'm sorry?
The, the, Commissioner Fred mentioned a few other things. Are they in the bid?
So there's a couple of other things that the, the Fruitvale Water System is handling on their own that are a little separate from this project. They're actually, we actually opened up bids for two waterline projects that are right there in that same area. The project that this is awarded to is, um, it's only for the grant. There's no like extra items outside of the grant limitations. The Fruitvale system is doing some extra work in that adjacent area, kind of as part of it. They're putting up the funds on their own. So it's serving quite a bit bigger area, but they're handling that on their own. If that kind of makes sense.
Any other questions, discussion? Sandy, you've seen problem with. Okay, we have a motion second. Any other question or discussions? As long, as long as Fruitvale understands they're paying the overage.
Yes, sir.
Make sure that's.
Yes.
We'll go up to the limit on the grant. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move back up to item number seven pursuant to chapter five five two of the Texas Government Code. The public is hereby given notice that the Commissioners Court of Van Zant County, Texas will convene in special session on the tenth day of November, uh, twenty twenty-one at nine AM to receive public comment on redistricting of county election, justice of the peace and Commissioners Court precincts. After the public hearing, the Commissioners Court will take up for consideration and into possible action regarding one or more alternative plans for the redistricting of county Commissioners Court precincts. The court reserves the right to take any and all appropriate actions regarding the redistricting of Van Zant County political boundaries, including the acceptance of new boundaries for the Commissioners Court precincts, modification of any boundaries and/or table independent proposals for later decision consideration and/or and/or action. We are on a time crunch. We're going to have to make a decision today. We, we're on a, actually before these boundaries and it, it's, it's, it's been wild, you know, the redistricting and everything through the state. Actually, people can start signing up for election November the thirteenth. But then there's a lot of, can it be challenged? Uh, you know, there's some uncertainties. Austin's saying you can, but don't sign up till the twenty-ninth because it's supposed to be two-thirds vote and they got a majority and it can be challenged that the redistricting is because of voting and that's why we're here. So at this time, at this time.
Nine eleven.
Nine eleven AM, we will open up a public hearing on the redistricting of county political boundaries. Just raise your hand the ones that would like to speak and address the court.
I will probably speak, but I might know which.
Okay, okay. So one. Will anybody? Yeah, uh, more ask you, remove your hats. We are in court. Remove you. Moving, removing caps. So we did have a workshop with the, our law firm. I don't remember what day last week, I believe. And, and so there's three proposals. Uh, proposal one, proposal two, and proposal two A. Is the three proposals before us. Jennifer, do we have handouts with maps? We have handouts with maps here? If anybody would like one of the maps. I don't know. Got the one that's in my book. Is that the one that's in the book? No, I don't. We don't, this one, well, I don't know. We got new, we got new email. Yeah, the big man. Okay, so that's where, okay. That proposal two? Yeah, I do. I've got proposal one, proposal two, and proposal two A. Is more clear?
It's true. It's readable.
On, on this one? Okay. And replace, replace this, okay, proposal two, and take this, take this one out? Yeah. Okay. It's the one that. Okay, that is a proposals, proposal one, two, and two A. It is a public hearing. Uh, I guess I want the public to have all the information they can. We did meet with Eric McGee. Our, the law firm that we contracted with to do the redistricting. Finally got a meeting scheduled. I guess we need to start between us and so the, and then we open it up to the, to the public. What is the Commissioners' position? Hardly if you want to go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more than happy. Of course, my position is we go with, with proposal two. And that leaves the, the county, the precinct lines about the same as they were ten years ago. And it limits the amount of really roads that any particular commissioner has to take in. So under any other proposal, I'm going to be getting about eight miles of roads that I'd have to take in. And I already have precinct two has fifty more miles of roads than any other precinct. About fifty-four mile, fifty-five more miles than precinct one, fifty more miles than precinct three, and sixty more miles than precinct four. So with any other proposal, I'd be taking in eight, eight more miles of roads that that according to the Van Zant County Payment Assessment Study that was done in twenty fifteen, those roads that I'd be taking in are ranked four and five worse roads in the assessment study. So you're looking at some pretty poor roads that I've been taking as opposed to the roads that precinct three would be taking in, which are ranked from one to two, one to three in, in the assessment study. So we've always historically tried to do the best we could to make sure that one vote. You know, one vote, one person, one vote. In other words, one, one person had the same weight of voting as any other voter in, in, in Van Zant County. And so those lines there, they've been, they've been there for twenty years. And we've never had a problem and people in those precincts and they know where to go. They know where to go to vote. So that, that would be the, my proposal that we would go with number two.
Okay. Any other Commissioner positions, comments?
I'll, I'll speak. I would, I would propose two A and with, with all respect, I agree with Mr. Milton on the number of miles he has. But I've had several people, the, the part that's south of twenty has been that way for twenty years. The part north of twenty has only been that way for ten years. And there's been a lot of people petitioning me to try to straighten that line up because there's a lot of confusion on the way that precinct line bounces back and forth across I twenty. I've had both JP's involved. They've asked, asked me to try to straighten that line up. And this is the only time we could do it. As far as roads, I'd like to hand this out to, to the to the Commissioners. And and the, this is our, our road inventory. And, and I'll tell you, I, I'm, I knew this was this way, but I thought it was straightened up when we did our new inventory, but it wasn't. I started looking at the numbers of miles of road and there's, uh, there's fourteen point six miles of road that is south of I twenty involved. And there's seven point eight oh one miles of road that's north of I twenty to involve. And I have a, I have a highlighted in yellow what's north and then red and pink what's south. The, the sad part of the bill is when you look at our road inventory already currently, and I guess it's been that way for twenty years because the roads south of twenty have, were moved twenty years ago. There is eleven point oh three two miles of road that is south of twenty that's already in precinct three's and precinct two's inventory. And precinct two's been getting the revenue for that for twenty years. So it won't change. Actually, it's going to help the miles of the road when it's all said and done. The precinct two's, according to the inventory, precinct two's mileage will decrease by four point two three one miles. Precinct three's inventory will increase by five point three three one miles. That's all due to the mistakes that were made on this for twenty years. So for twenty years, precinct three's been taking care of those roads south of twenty, but precinct two's been getting revenue for it. It's not, it's not your fault. It's just. There, look back there on your, in your inventory on precinct three. They're all highlighted, highlighted in red if you'll start in, in precinct two inventory.
If you look in your inventory sheet. My inventory sheet.
Yeah, here.
That was corrected, that was corrected. And if you look at, at precinct two, my, my, they're not in there.
Yes, sir. If you're looking at that, yeah. If you'll go back to, this is the current inventory, I'll just hand it out, that, that we voted on by. Twenty-one eighteen is in two, twenty-one oh eight is in two, twenty-one thirty-five is in two, twenty-one thirty-two is in two. Twenty-one forty-two is in two. Twenty-one fifty, uh, no, twenty-one fifty is in two. And it's all on there. Twenty-one thirty-four is in two. The only road, only road that is south of twenty that's in precinct three is the part of Old Kaufman that I have, twenty-one twenty. Now, there is four roads that are not, not listed in any inventory. Yours are mine. It's, it's on the front page. Twenty-one thirteen, twenty-one sixty-one, twenty-one sixty-two, and twenty-one sixty-three is not in your inventory or precinct three's inventory. That's a total of one point one miles. So your overall mileage as far as up there where it says you have, uh, three hundred and thirty-three miles of road is going to go down by four miles. You'll have three hundred and twenty-nine miles of road if we do this switch the way this is now. If we don't do the switch, uh, your, your mileage is wrong. It's going to come down substantially because we'll have to move all those roads back over to precinct three where they should have been in the inventory all along.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're talking about, but I think you've got the wrong inventory because here is the latest updated inventory. I'll give it to you. Those roads are not in my inventory. And here, here.
This may be yours, but we, we approved this master sheet. We didn't approve it.
The master sheet is gonna, uh, is gonna be, all these were submitted. And here is yours, here's precinct three. You'll find these roads in your, in your.
That's, this is not what we approved. We approved this master sheet. Well, what we approved it for was a master sheet, not these individual sheets.
Those, uh, those master sheets, those sheets right there are combined and were all combined together. So I, I'm, I'm just telling you, that's the correct, that's correct inventory. And if you'll pull, you can go ahead and pull the master out of that bunch there and it will reflect the correct roads.
Miss, Miss Hill, can I ask what, what percentage we're paying those loans right now?
We got about eighty-two point zero one twelve miles. Uh, precinct two has three seventeen point four five miles. Precinct three has two fifty-one, one sixty-six eight miles. The male can get twenty-nine point three four percent of the revenue and we get twenty-four point eight.
So that, that doesn't, yeah.
Well, this, this is the document right here pulled right off the computer that we approved it for. Yeah. No, 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 no. This, this is what the girl that was working for sent of all of us that we approved.
This here is not the correct copy. I'm telling you, it's not the correct copy. We can, we can go back and look. I, I have the, we can pull the correct copy. This, this is a copy, but this is not the, you know, she had to come in and redo that because text doc came up and said, no, this is not right. So she had to redo all these and that's why she gave each of us what roads we had and then she combined those copies. She, she combined those copies into a master list. Each of us has a copy of our roads. The road that I give you is, the road that I give you is precinct two and precinct three.
So right now.
That's a master, that's a master copy. And right now, so would you agree that, that, that right now I have fifty more miles than you do already?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But, but like we all stated, I, I understand. We're doing, that's why you, the priest, we divide our money up by road mileage and not equally. But we've got a great opportunity to straighten out that line over there, which will help a whole lot more people than just, just what roads are involved, what we're involved. So.
It won't, it won't help anybody voting because they know where to vote already. I mean, how, how's it going to help people?
It, it will, it will clear up that line where if there's a, there's a lot of confusion. Ms. Blaster said that and, and, uh, I think Judge John will agree to that, that there's a lot of confusion in that line. But the, the bottom line is, like I said the other day, we're not all going to agree on this and that's okay. It's, uh, it's going, it's come, come a time where we got to vote and move on.
And I, and I understand that. I'm just, I understand that no matter what, I'm picking up more roads. And these roads are, are classified as four and five roads, worse in, in the assessment. We've always tried to keep it even and not add any more roads to a precinct to take care of. We've always done it. Now, you said Myrtle Springs, but when I came in, I had Myrtle, Myrtle Springs been there twenty years. I came in, I had Myrtle Springs.
That was, that's a, so.
I don't know.
One and Myrtle Springs switched over. I thought that is ten years ago.
I had Myrtle Springs. Myrtle Springs had been there for twenty, twenty years. Same voting box.
Was same, same box.
Same, same, same design.
I think it's switched ten years. But anyway, it's, it's, it meant with, there's going to be some differences and we're, we're, we've got to got to move on. Take a vote and see how that goes. Herbert, did you want to say anything?
Oh, hold on, hold on. I want y'all to get it out. I think the people, hold on, hold on, Judge. Hold up, just. I want everyone to, to, to understand the Commissioners' position. My position is it's not about roads. It's about voting.
It is about voting.
That's what my, my whole deal is. And, and, and the guy, the reason we redistrict is because of voting boundaries and one person, one vote.
That's right.
And we try to keep it even according to the, to the voting. And Susan, did you want to address anything? You're elected official, which is over the voting.
I can tell you, we, since we started this and people know we're fixing a redistricting stuff, uh, the elderly people who have lived in the precincts where they've lived or whatever, and when they, they first made that switch, whether it's twenty years ago, they still don't think it's right. They voted in precinct two this many years, whatever, and then something happened. They voted in precinct two this many years, whatever, and then something happened. Somebody ran is what the story is on the wrong precinct. And that's why those lines were moved. Is that true? Is that not? I don't know, but I can tell you people that are calling us for voting on, you know, that one of a precinct two. That's where they're at. Is that it should have never been changed when they changed. But it was changed because the commissioner ran in, I think for precinct three, but lived in precinct two. So we've gotten probably maybe twelve phone calls on that.
Okay, uh Judge. Jennifer, make sure you get.
Both. These speakers. And then two. But certainly. That would put everything's more of interstate as far as from pranks, changes, hurt. The way it is sound. The way the line is showing it sound. There are some people in that whole springs area that in the other precinct two. So it is confusing. The way it is, the way it exists now. Two A was kind of stretching and I will get. I'll have that fixed.
Okay. Ms. Curry, our district attorney.
I just have a question. Does anybody have a layout of what it is now?
Yeah, we we have.
We're running to tell what it is now. I'll progress it.
Do we have any extra copies here? Do we?
I think she's got a copy of.
No, I have the proposals.
Okay.
Then if you have.
What it is now.
It's like a proposal number two is like it is now.
Number two is what it is now. Okay.
Well, not not exactly. Number two has got a change in precinct three and 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 one.
If you just come straight down nineteen from what we done for precinct ones, we took in a little jump from nineteen over eight fifty nine. It used to come straight down nineteen to Interstate twenty.
If so, if you're looking at if you're looking at uh uh proposal number two. If you're looking at it, you'll see that it used to come all the way down nineteen into Kent, but now it jumps over to eight fifty nine.
Yes, sir.
Eight fifty nine would take in a tailwind, tailwind. Airport. Yeah.
Did it also come straight down nineteen around Edgewood?
I've always had Edgewood in mind.
You've always had it.
Yeah.
It would it would come down straight down nineteen, it'd land on the east side of nineteen, it would be precinct one. West side.
With the exception.
With and and so you have that little bit of difference right there, right here north of Kent. You also have a little bit of difference south of Canton on that two A. Where uh two A, no, yeah, two A. Uh. What Virgil precinct two yield the area from nineteen at two forty three. Over to one ninety eight and comes back up to the courthouse here. So from the courthouse from nineteen to one ninety eight to two forty three. That was in Virgil's and in two A, it's going it's going to it would go to precinct three. Four precinct four, I'm sorry.
But that's in two and two.
Yeah, that's.
Okay. So that what at those two changes north of. Uh twenty here, well, north here starts here and goes north. And the one south, that change is in two and two A. You you you're you're talking about what did it used to go back to? Okay. That's what the battles like that. There's where the battle is. Okay, cause three crosses twenty. And comes down there and uh and and two crosses twenty going into to uh. Precinct three Myrtle Springs and that's what the.
But that is the same as what's the the way it is now on that issue is what's reflected in.
Yes, yes. Okay, so far and and so far everyone we've heard from is elected officials. And it is a public hearing. Is there anyone? Is there any other elected official would like to voice their? Okay.
When Eric spoke uh and was giving the percentages, he was talking about people.
Right.
Not the roads. So I just want to clarify that for everybody that his percentage is trying to balance the people.
Right.
And and.
Yeah.
Every proposal. Every proposal is equal rights. One vote has the same weight in Van Zant County as any other vote. In all these proposals. But my deal is, you know, why don't if if all of them have the same, if every vote has the same way. Why change something that's been twenty years in 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 really call the hardship on precinct two? I mean, I'm not I'm just, we're we're talking about votes here. If if all these proposals have the same weight, one vote has the same weight. Then why change the lines that's been there for twenty years? And would cause hardship on another commissioner's precinct. Don't make sense.
Well, there's a lot of people that believe that they should have they should not have been changed twenty years ago.
Well, twenty.
Well, and we've got a chance to write something that that was.
Well, yeah, we do have a chance, but but it could cause hardship on another precinct.
Okay, I think you understand the positions. Uh so we'll move further into the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Everyone's invited to speak, encouraged to speak. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Okay, uh. Do what? You I mean, you can speak there if you use a microphone where everybody can hear you. Uh you're a this is Lance Gooden. State your name. Lance 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 Lynn's state your name position.
All right, Lance Lynn's Van Zant County Republican chairman and have been for the last twenty eight years. Um I'm in favor of the two A. I was here for the working sessions. I know Virgil isn't happy with it. I think that's why he's wearing the the brace today because I'm twisting his arm. But from the county chairman's standpoint and removing what I considered was a gerrymandered line. As chairman, I have not liked gerrymandered lines. When people move into the county, they call both the Republican and Democratic chairs and ask. Where do I vote? And our normal question is, do you live above Interstate twenty or below Interstate twenty, east of nineteen or west of nineteen? This gives us a real quick idea where they're at and we can go find their road and help them to vote. Also as county chair, it is very difficult to get precinct chairs to staff election boxes when they live further away than they need to be. We have consolidated lots of boxes over the years, which has helped our Will's Point. But um. From the standpoint of this map, it looked it'll clean things up. I would have liked to have gotten rid of Edgewood and put that in Commissioner three, but this has to do with numbers of voters per commissioner. And taking in Tailwind Air Park probably looks like the least amount of changes that can be done. And still make it easy both on the uh the two parties and probably the county of saying. You know, where we now live, where new roads are getting added. It's much quicker just to use the original lines of nineteen and twenty. So I support two A.
Is there any? Have you seen the state redistricting map? Have you seen that?
Yes, I have.
Looks like a jigsaw. So now, you know, so here here the state map is is worse than way worse than whatever we've got here. But yet you you want to you want to clean things up. Like sometimes you just can't clean things up. You know?
On the state map. Okay, the state guideline is to try and keep counties whole. So um US Congress, Van Zant County is still a whole county. Uh State Senate, State Representative, Van Zant County is still a whole county, unlike Smith County, which had to be divided. But we were able to remain whole and it's the same principle behind here is trying to keep the commissioner precincts. With easy defined lines for voters who come in and will know where they need to be.
I agree. And the voters know if they've been there twenty years where to vote.
But new voters coming in don't. And some of my old voters still ask why they have to drive from Myrtle Springs.
They don't have to drive to Myrtle Springs. They don't vote at Fox in Myrtle Springs.
No, while they're driving from Myrtle Springs south instead of going to Will's Point.
Scott, is there anyone on Zoom that want to come in?
Have this person that still hasn't responded to my message.
Okay, let him in and see. We'll we'll see what the position. I don't want to keep anyone from speaking.
I want to show that. In yours?
Can you hear us, Ms. Judge Plaster?
Muted on her end.
Yeah.
Is that the one that's wanting to speak? I know what's that.
Ju- Judge, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, did you want? We are in a public hearing. You've been watching us.
Yes.
Okay, did you want to state a position?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners Court. I would like to speak on behalf of the redistricting. From the start, I would like to say roads are very important, but votes are just as important. On behalf of Justice of the Peace Precinct Two, with the court taking in the Myrtle Springs community. A lot of the citizens in that area get really confused as to where to file their evictions. On an eviction, the property must be in that precinct. Many times citizens of this community go to JP three to file to file only but only to be told that they will have to file in JP two court. With that in mind, I would like for you to consider on moving the lines drawn where they would be in the precinct three. I believe this would cut down on a lot of confusion for the citizens. Thank you for all you do on the court.
Okay, so what 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 is your position on which proposal?
On uh the proposal one where you uh where you uh take uh the north of the service road, I believe it's uh the Myrtle Springs community. And place it in precinct three. Is that correct?
Yeah, that proposal two A.
One and two.
Yeah, one and two.
Okay.
One and two.
Okay.
I'm just I'm just trying to stand up for the citizens to help them, you know. From having to avoid to go to two different courts to get their uh uh business taken care of.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it.
And that's the same issue you have, Judge Dunn, the the eviction. Okay, anyone else from the public like to speak? It's real quiet. It's gonna be okay. The. Okay. Let me make another call for from the from the public, any anyone from the public that would like to speak on the on the proposals, proposal one, two, and two A on the redistricting. One more time, third and final call. Is there anyone here present on Zoom or in person that would like to speak on the redistricting boundary?
And Judge uh Judge Plaster was the only participant.
Yeah. Okay, being none, uh we're still in the public hearing. Uh is there anything commissioners would like to like to say?
I'd like to make one other comment. For for years since I've been involved in this, there's been a a lot of concern. People come to me. Anytime a precinct line is divided on a county road. It's different than being divided on a state road. Uh when it's divided on a county road. One of the two precincts has to work on the road. It doesn't divide down the center line and and one precinct works on half the road. Other precinct works on the other side. One of the two precincts takes the whole road. So when that happens. And I'll give you a scenario. You've got a county road and precinct three is over here and precinct two is over here and precinct three takes care of the road. Everybody that comes to me that are over here in Tuesday, I have no representation on the court on my road. I have representation on other things in the county, but when it comes to my road, I cannot decide who the commissioner is that's gonna be working on my road. Because they they live in the precinct, the side of the road that doesn't take care of the road. So we doing this, dividing this down Interstate twenty eliminates about six miles of road where that won't happen anymore. Where the the road will be taken care of and the people on both sides of the road are in that same precinct. So uh that it gives the people that feel they feel like they have representation on the on the court as when it comes to their road. Uh sometimes it's not avoidable. Sometimes you have to divide it on on a county road. But this is a situation that we've got a chance to correct that.
Well, I'd like to say something. There's only one road that would be involved in that and that's the twenty one twenty. That's Old Coffin Road. That's at two and a half miles that our attorney explained to us that there was no way that. One person had to take control of that road and you got the money, you got the benefits of that. You got the percentage of money to fix that road. Now, twenty one twenty, you know, I've seal coded part of that the the day you got here. I've taken, even though it's not my road, I went ahead and seal coded. Down from twenty one eighteen down to twenty to twenty one oh five. And so, you know, I pitched in on that road, even though I didn't get any money for that. So I don't want to hear, you know, that it's going to be six miles of road. It's 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 basically uh uh that one road, Old Coffin Road, twenty one twenty.
Well, do with all do with all respect, Mr. Nelson, is is twenty one twenty. It's twenty one forty two is a is a dividing line between the precincts. Uh thirty four uh oh three. I believe it is uh over north of the twenty where it divides our precincts. Uh I take care of that road. Half the people living on one side live in two, the people on the other side live in three. Uh every dividing line in that whole job uh. Is affected. So so it's more more just that road. It's about about six miles.
I have part of, we go back and forth for that, but I have part of twenty one forty two myself, you know. I take care. I take care of about a fourth of a mile of it and you you take care of the other part.
You take care of a fourth of a mile and I take care of two miles of.
Well, that was two miles.
Two miles of road, but it it the same situation.
Okay, I think.
I'm gonna say the same situation exists in the quarter of a mile that you take care of. At the two miles that I'm talking, you still have people each side of the road that are in two different precincts.
And just for clarification, as I stated, I'm minding about the roads. Mine's about the voting representation uh with our our voting structure and stuff to make sure the voting is correct. The from my position, doesn't matter if you take the roads, put them in that precinct, this precinct or that precinct. We budgeted. We budget according to road miles. That'll work itself out. Uh uh mine's about the voting. Uh I think we understand.
We all understand that. But but in all these proposals, each vote has the same weight.
Okay.
Is ever is everybody. Is ever, is everybody in Benjick County, and that's what counts.
Okay. I think it's clear. Anyone from the public one more time? Okay, we will close the public hearing. What time?
Nine fifty.
Nine fifty. We will close the public hearing at nine fifty AM, and move into the regular session of the Commissioners Court. Item number nine, discuss and select twenty-twenty-one redistricting proposal of Van Zant County political subdivisions. You have the proposals before you, proposal one, proposal two, proposal two A. I'm gonna call for a rec, a record vote. And I'll start with Commissioner one. Commissioner Lepred, which is your vote?
Two A.
Okay, Commissioner Lepred votes for two A. Okay. Commissioner Milton, vote for two. Commissioner Milton votes for proposal two. Mr. Pearson?
Two A.
Mr. Pearson votes for two A. Commissioner West?
Two.
Okay, Commissioner West votes for two. So we got two votes for proposition, proposal one, two, and two votes for proposal two A. Minding around the road, sir, my vote, and I'll break the tie, proposal two A. We'll move to item number eleven, discuss and consider votes for the appointment of the Van Zant County Appraisal District Board of Directors twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three term. You have, I think y'all have the ballot in your packets, do you not? Okay, if you look in, I think you see the, the appointment, the tax and unit calculated votes, Van Zant County gets twenty-eight point six percent, we get one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight votes for the board members. It can be cast for one, or it can be split between the others. They it talked to Scott Hyde, you have five nominees here for the board, there's five positions open on the board. So basically, all of them's gonna be elected. Van Zant County can do, like you can cast, you know, Larry Shackelford is our representative on that board, but you can do the votes. Talking to Scott, Scott said, correct me if I'm wrong, Chad, Scott said that if they get a thousand votes, they're guaranteed a position on the board. But you, it's, it's, it's the pleasure of the court. What is the pleasure of the court? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we give a thousand, Mr. Shackelford, and split the rest between Mr. Bailey and Mr. Thomas.
I really don't know how you go with that. Give a thousand to one and split the rest house.
Equally.
Okay, what would that be? Let's see.
It's a divide.
You, two forty-eight by two.
Yeah.
I mean, well, four, four twenty-eight.
Yeah, that'd be two hundred fourteen eight.
Yeah, two hundred, so your, your motion, Commissioner Lepred, is to cast a thousand votes for Mr. Larry Shackelford, and two hundred and fourteen for Edward Bailey and Kyle Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's Commissioner Lepred's motion, is there a second? Okay, second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion?
Well, I understand where Chad's going, because he thinks people are in his precinct, but if we're gonna split it, we've never split it in the past. If we're gonna split it, then I'm gonna split it for the guys in precinct three. So this, and I'm sure, Mr. Milton, I won't split it for the guys in his precinct.
I don't think the numbers is gonna make, it make a difference.
They're all going into.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't.
Then that's, then that's put all of our vote, we've always put it, don't split it.
I, I don't think we'll split it either.
We can, we can, we can put it all into, to.
Larry Shackelford.
Okay, but I got a motion and a second. I gotta go. Any other questions, discussion?
Yeah, they're all, they're all.
Okay.
You know, I'll go, I'll, whatever you want. Oh, he's got.
We got a motion, we got a second, we could, we got discussion, we're gonna vote. Now, if you want to, I mean, you can certainly vote that down and then come back. But all those for splitting the votes and giving Larry Shackelford a thousand votes, Edward Bailey two hundred and fourteen votes, and Kyle Thompson two hundred and vote, fourteen votes, say aye? Okay. All those opposed? Okay. Got too far to again? Okay, I would oppose, mine's a, a for no, I oppose, that's a so motion failed? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we give it all to Mr. Shackelford, that's what we've always done, and that, and that way, that way we don't have controversy, because Mr. Wilson's gonna ask me why I didn't put in three votes.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Lepred. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in fire, all in favor of giving Larry Shackelford the one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight votes, say aye? Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number twelve, discuss and consider annual Texas A&amp;M Ag Life Extension Program Interpretation of the Twenty-Twenty-One Four-H Program Achievements for Van Zant County to the Commissioners Court by Melissa Rhodes, Van Zant County Extension Agent and Four-H Coordinator.
I'll make this as briefly as I can. I know y'all have a lot of very important business, but I think it's also important that annually I come in and update y'all on what's going on with our youth here in our county, as we work to strive to keep them involved. This past year was quite a challenging year, we'd come off our COVID year, and that was a huge hit for Four-H during that shutdown time period, and getting them back involved. So we made a drastic drop, the, the year of the COVID, we had a hundred and forty-six members. This past year, we only had eighty-two. So it's been a challenge to try to get things back going, and thankfully, we're headed back in the right direction now. But we did have some youth that stayed with the program regardless of the circumstances, and Extension did continue to try to have as many programs as they could, and opportunities for our youth to compete. And we did have a, a lot of success, some of the things that, I'm just gonna highlight some of these highlights that they succeeded at, was the district photography contest, you know, a lot of kids in this county who love to get out and take pictures around the county and so forth. And we had several that placed, we won numerous divisions, I had eleven participants, and then we had some that went on and advanced, we had four that made it to the state level, and also received blue ribbons there. So we definitely have some people who do an outstanding job with the photography. In the livestock areas, we had, at our county fair, we had twelve members that participated and made the sale. We had the OPB Breed Division Championship in the hog contest, and that was a young lady, it was her first time to show at the county. So she was pretty, she was pretty pumped, let me say, she's already shown at the State Fair of Texas this year, she is gung ho, she's determined now, this is fun. So anyway, and then we also, of course, had a young lady who had the grand championship, she has been doing this for a very long time, since she was nine years old, and she's a junior this year. So she's done this a lot, and won several awards. One of our areas that has really grown is our archery, and we had three compete at the district level for that, and we also had three that competed in the shooting sports, and that's usually rifle, shotgun, or pistol. We also had one young man that went on to the state level in the archery, and he also became a shooting sports ambassador for archery. And so he's got to do some traveling and speaking. He also competed on, at the national level, and won on that team at the national level, which is the first time we've ever had anyone win at that, that was in the hunting skills. So that's really grown a lot of interest, especially our young ones are starting to get involved in that. One of the other new programs that we added this past year was a new Four-H dog program, and we had a couple ladies that got started doing that for me. She's done a lot of training in Dallas County, she had her own program for many years, she's retired, and so she wants to teach the youth. And so we started that up, we ended up with twelve people doing that, which is pretty impressive, because the child and their parent had to come every time. And so they met four times at the library and did classroom activities, and then they spent eight more times, or seven times down at the county fairgrounds doing that. And so we ended up with twelve participants who completed the whole eight-week series, because they had to attend eight of the series. So I'm very pleased with that. The good news is that's continuing on this fall, and we've got it back going up again. So that's a program I think that's gonna hang around, seen a lot of interest in that. Summertime, we did a lot of camp, we did some camps to try to get kids back in Four-H. I did a fashion sewing camp, that we had eight participants that came for three days, and boy, it was that a fun experience. There's nothing like teaching a nine-year-old how to cut, so, so that was fun, we had a blast.
Y'all did good on that. My niece was in, in the dog training camp, so.
Yeah, it was a lot of, they have a good time. And so then after that, I did a baking camp, and they came, and they learned how to bake cupcakes and decorate them. And I'm telling you, that, it's so funny, you get to see children really express themselves, you see who's very artistic, you know? And so that was fun. And so, though we had ten participants in that. And so anyway, we also then, of course, to help recognize our kids at the end of the year, we always have some kind of awards. In the past, it's been a banquet, we switched it to just a reception because of all the food handling and so forth, and trying to keep everyone healthy. So we did that, and we had seventy attend for that, that was parents and family members that joined their child. So that was really why we were up to award our, our typical Gold Star and Silver Star and Golden Awards, all those, they receive buckles, and those that did record books got jackets and so forth. And we had two record books, I think I left that off of here, we had two record books that went on to state this year also, and they placed in the top ten of that. So I was very pleased with those kids. But last year, we had archery shooting sports, we had the Free State Four-H Club, we had a project club, we had a horse club, a beef club, and vet science, and Martin's Mill also had a community club. Our vet science program is headed up by Dr. Stacy Lowry out of Will's Point. She works with those youth, they can do the program, and when they actually graduate from high school, they are prepared to take their vet science test so they can be an assistant in an office. So it's kind of a cool program, if they really want to be committed to it. And for some, it's just explore it for a future career. So those are all the things we've been doing. Like I said, we had a low year last year because of COVID, and, and I'm pleased to say that as of today, we have a hundred and seventeen members that are currently enrolled for this year in Four-H, and we're already got a lot of programs going. So I think we'll recover from COVID, it's just been like everything in our county and everything in our state, it's just all been delayed by it, but we're definitely back on the right track with that program.
Thank you, Melissa. You do a great job.
Thank you.
Uh, it's incredible. It's part of the stuff that goes on in the county that most people don't see. And so I would encourage all, all of them to be involved in Four-H. We've had a lot of discussions this, this year, do we have this event, do we have this gathering? COVID, it's been challenging, but we got through it, and that's a great, great report for the youth of Van Zant County, and hats off to you and Tommy for what you guys do over there. It doesn't go unnoticed. We do appreciate you, even though we're not in contact that much.
Thank y'all, we appreciate y'all's support.
Don't think there's any action on item number twelve, that was a report on the county extension agent from Melissa Rhodes and the Four-H coordinator. Moving to item number thirteen, discuss and consider preliminary twenty-twenty-one American Rescue Plan projects. We had, we, we contracted with good night, Grant Works, we've contracted with Grant Works to help us maneuver through this. It is the American Rescue Plan. And we needed to identify projects that we would like to see. So our project list, I would make a motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-one, the preliminary twenty-twenty-one American Rescue Plan Act projects for first responder radios, jail, construction, roads, and Scott, was it cybersecurity? Oh, it's, okay, I didn't know if it was cyber, just IT security, cybersecurity, and the district attorney, district clerk archived records. That was our, our five that we identified as being our preliminary twenty-twenty-one American Rescue Plan.
Did you mention radios?
Yes, radios was first, but in no certain order. I mean, and the reason we say preliminary, that could change. They're still trying to figure out what the money can be spent on. That's federal money. Unless you walk through this with them before, we're not gonna tell you whether you can or can't, you just go ahead, and after you spend the money, we'll, we'll let you know if it, if it, if it was, if we're gonna reimburse it or not. It, and it's changing the whole time, as you go through it, it is very, very difficult. So that is a preliminary report, I, I made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You got a second by Commissioner Lepred. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, I, you know, I think we go ahead and send this list in, because we're not talking about any particular thing, or actually any article that I know of. But, you know, we got that report from Jim Allison, and that wasn't, that's not necessarily his recommendation to do. I don't see any problem with it, as long as we're not spending the money till we find out.
What is, what is his, what, what did you say, his is not, his recommendation not to do?
He, he sent out a recommendation, and he said that the amount under the lost revenue provision is one thing that's in question right now, that ten thousand dollars or, or the percentage like Sandy had to figure, and he said, those funds under the lost revenue can be used for anything except tax reduction and pensions. And he said he'd recommend not doing any other specific use of the funds until they come out with a list and say, this is what you can use. He said, but if you gotta do it, you need to go to, under the FAQ section of the U.S. Treasury website to see what they say. So that, that was his recommendation.
Okay.
But I don't think it'll make any difference to us going in turn.
Correct.
Which is, and then see what they go from there.
Okay. Okay, any other question, discussion? All in favor?
If you wouldn't have lost revenue, we could spend that however we want to spend it.
That, that's right, but the question is, is it gonna be the ten, thirty percent of ten thousand? That, that's right, but the question is, is it gonna be the ten, thirty percent of ten thousand or it's gonna be the way that she figured it? Which is less than that, right?
It's ten million, not ten thousand, it's ten million or right now, Grant Works, my niece is the resident chapter, I have it ready.
Okay. Yeah.
And you hire Grant Works, shouldn't you?
I understand that, Jim Allison for sure.
But you hired Grant Works to, to guide you through this process and I mean, I have the calculator ready, all I gotta do is, I've turned it into and we're might, we're tweaking it right now.
Okay.
But we're waiting on the house to vote on, uh, I don't have the house number with me. But if that goes, it's already went through the senate, if that goes through the house, then ten million of it will be freed up. And we only got ten million nine hundred ninety one thousand, so. But you need to start your right, your radio project now, I mean, we know that is gonna be, that's approved. That's an eligible expense, so that's our biggest project, so I would, I would, I think we should instruct Grant Works to start that project.
Yeah.
Okay.
But my motion is just send this list to them saying, hey, here's our five, here, here's our five, no certain order, here's our five. What we're looking at, that could change, uh, it's preliminary. Okay, you got a motion, you got a second?
Grant Works be able to start looking or the process for hiring the consulting firm to do the radio project based off this list?
I, I'm, I agree with Sandy, I think it's time to say, you know, that, I, I think that's right there, the radio, go ahead and do what we need to do. Start the radio project. And so we don't even know what that calls, so that gives you an idea of what's left after. And then as we get further into that, then you would know how much money you still got left to work. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider approval of petition to set speed limit on Van Zet County Road thirty-eight sixteen in precinct three to thirty-five miles per hour.
Uh, yes sir judge, I have the petition here, if y'all would like to see it, it's been signed by the people that live in, in that area. I make a motion that uh, we set that speed limit to thirty-five miles an hour.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Pearson to set the speed limit on Van Zet County thirty, thirty-eight, Van Zet County Road thirty-eight sixteen to thirty-five miles an hour.
That's correct.
I got a motion, is there a second? Got a second by Commissioner West, any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider approval of the Watson Estate subdivision in precinct one.
Yes sir, I put this one on the agenda. We had tabled at last meeting because we have some things we had to correct, so I'd like to start by thanking Mr. Casserson and his associates. They got to be the first ones to go through the engineer, it's, it's been a process, work, it's uh, appreciate their patience and their diligence and assisting us with this. Everything is checked out, everything's proper and in order and I'm making motion that we approve subdivision.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner LaPrin, second by Commissioner Melton, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider approval of Francis Second Edition subdivision in precinct three.
Uh, yes sir gentlemen, this is one of those things, it's really not a subdivision, it's just uh, they're dividing uh, a tract of land and the two lots, it, it meets all of our guidelines, I make a motion, we accept.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner West, any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider approval of replant of lots twenty-seven and twenty-eight of Hill Creek Estates in precinct four.
Uh, that's mine, we can't, having Hill Creek Estates, I think there are like thirty something lots out there. Uh, they started, uh, the first asset started, the builder screwed up and got too close to the property line. And uh, so what they're asking here is, we're just gonna take that line, it's a straight line, they're just gonna tweak it a little bit, one direction and the other end of the other direction and it gets them back in compliance and it gets the builder where he, like, I, I move that we approve.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second by Commissioner Pearson? Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider closing approximately one hundred and thirty-six feet by eighty feet of McCain I can uh, street right away in Myrtle Springs associated with lots thirty through thirty-three.
Yes sir, uh, Mr. Melton's seen a lot of these come through the court. The, the Myrtle Springs is laid out over there with the streets and alleys and this McCain Street uh, will never be a street and matter of fact, some of the stuff to the uh, some of this right of way to the north of it's already been closed. So uh, this, these people that own these lots have approached the court to ask if we would do away with that right of way that joins their lots, their own lot, it joins lot thirty, lot thirty-one, lot thirty-two, lot thirty-three and, and the north half of lot thirty-four. Uh, I'll make a motion to do away with this right of way and when the uh, they'll have to get it surveyed, when they bring the survey back to the, to the county uh, to transfer the deed that we authorized the uh, county judge to sign that, uh, when they could get all the paperwork and all.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion?
I have one.
Okay.
Uh, it said you want to close approximately one, a hundred and thirty-six feet to eighty feet. I see the eighty is the, the street uh, width, but a hundred and thirty-six, I don't see where that is. The, the, the lots only are a hundred and thirteen.
Okay, that's a, that's a mistake, that should be a, that should be a hundred and thirteen times one, two, three, four. Cause they have, I thought the hundred and thirteen was the total width of this, but that's, that's just each lot?
I don't know, but you're asking if you close a hundred and thirty-six, I couldn't figure out what the difference was.
I'm sorry, it should, it should have been a hundred and thirteen point oh six, approximately a hundred and thirteen feet by.
Point, one thirteen point oh six?
Approximately.
Oh eight?
Yes sir.
Okay.
That would be my fault, I probably picked that information wrong. It would be approximately eighty feet by a hundred and thirteen feet.
Okay, you wanna amend your motion?
I amend my motion that we uh, discontinue or do away with our right of way, the county right of way on the proposed McCain Street. Uh, and it's a, the section uh, that involved that touches lot thirty, lot thirty-one, lot thirty-two, lot thirty-three. And the north half of lot thirty-four is approximately a hundred and thirteen feet by eighty feet.
Okay.
And they'll, they'll need to have it surveyed and bring that description and have a deed drawn up on that description to be in the county's name and authorize the county judge to transfer that deed to them.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yes sir.
And my amended motion, amended second. Okay, you'll second, second, okay. They uh, any questions, discussion? I would like uh, be- before it's presented to me for signature, for your approval.
Yes sir.
You, you approve it and then get it to me before I sign, okay? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider accepting private road seventy-five oh five and J three ranch subdivision, it's the precinct three road inventory. Is that your?
Oh, I'm sorry, it is.
Hello.
That's a, yes sir, that's a, uh, Mr. Cox put in a subdivision and it's been three, three years ago. And uh, he got lucky, he, he caught me when I didn't know any better and I told him that if he put that road in right, the county would accept it. And uh, it, or, or I'll come to the court and ask them to accept it. It's been there uh, uh, two years now and uh, it's in, it's in good shape. And uh, he's provided a document signing over all the uh, uh, easements that he, the road easements that he has signing those easements over to the county. And uh, I'm making motion, we uh, accept that and put this uh, it's, put this road over, it's private road right now, it'll change to a uh, I'm thirty-five, it might change to thirty-five oh five, but we put this road into our, our Van Zet County Road inventory.
Okay, that's a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West, is there any discussion?
Uh, has someone contacted nine one one to be issued?
He said, yes sir, I, I, I will, they uh, we contacted them when they, when in as a private road, but we'll con, there, there's, how many people live on in Alpo?
There's, that's three, four living on our address.
Yeah, there, there'll be four people that their address will change, yes sir, I will notify uh, them that just changed to a county road.
Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty, discuss and consider road and bridge material recycled crushed concrete change order from Woodrum Construction. Sandy, you wanna address the court on that, Miss Hill?
Judge, Commissioner, just a little bit of background, uh, this Brian, he's the owner of construction, uh, he's the owner of Woodrum Construction. He currently has the bid for your recycled crushed concrete, one in three fours and one in one four. Uh, Brian, according to the bid packet, which it does address change order says to send the county officer a letter, so Brian addressed me with a letter and um, I have some statutes to follow up, but I thought it would be best if Brian told me why he would send me in a change order to increase the material at this time.
Okay.
So when we uh, initially did this, I believe it was April May area and uh, I approached my suppliers asking way ahead of time, are we gonna have any price increases? In that time, several of our suppliers have been bought out by one large company, Arcosa and Arcosa has now become Arcosa Crush Concrete as well as fabricers that provide our plate here. Um, we were awarded the concrete, uh, the contract back in the spring, we acquired our first price increase in August one. Uh, told our company we would absorb it, did not want to petition the court on it. Since then, we've had two other price increases, we've gone up from my initial asking of them uh, for a commitment price, we've acquired three to five dollars a ton depending on which plant it comes out of. Uh, I initially decided we would try to absorb as much as we could and we came to a point now where I don't know that I can absorb a whole lot and stay in business, the reason that I'm here today. Um, on the change order, hopefully you have that in front of you, um, there are other companies with trucking, it's strictly still trucking, but our uh, business that we would have to truck again would greatly increase. So I petitioned court, they considered the consideration on this and just for transparency on it, we just received other letters from our Arcosa plant here in Will's Point that there will be an increase on that January one. That I believe does not affect my contract with the county, right now we're on a as needed basis on the glatey supply. Uh, but as far as where I stand right now, I have no intention of reapproaching for a price increase on fresh concrete. We should be locked in with consideration until the end of this contract and then up the consideration.
And as you all know, we've never really been faced with our, when we, when we bid on materials out there, offer our annual period of make ours through April thirtieth, so when Mr. Woodrum contacted me, um, I had never had this situation occur. So I did look to our tight legal assistants and she guided me and I believe I gave you all a copy yesterday that she finally got back with me later this afternoon. Uh, it is in the local government code two sixty-two point oh three one for changes in plans and specifications. And if you look at B, it does say that the court can increase up to a twenty-five percent and Mr. Woodrum's percentage increase is eleven percent, which allows the change. And I also went back and pulled the bids and he is, well, he only had one competitor bid against him which was Big City Crushed Rock out of the ski and their bids were uh, considerably higher than what Mr. Woodrum did all with just three dollar increase. So, you know, if, if, if Big City Crushed Rock was gonna be lower, the court could go back and look maybe with, you know, award of that. But they're not, so he's still below bid on. And we've all talked, you know, once the change order come in, I kind of visited with y'all and our, our vendors are short in Van Zet County and I just feel like it's the best recommendation for y'all to afford the cost of first commission to that.
Can I make a motion to accept the adjustment?
Okay, got, got a motion by Commissioner LaPrin, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion?
Uh, yeah, you know, I don't have a solid with this, we're gonna run into it with all of our other suppliers. Uh, you know, I have, I'm not wanting to buy it because our prices are too low, they can't, I mean, they're losing money every time they sell us one, so they just won't sell us one. And uh, they'll tell us they're out of stock or whatever, but we're gonna run into a call of them and I think we need to probably, I don't know whether we need to have a discussion on that or workshop or whatever, but you know, I can, I can envision by January first, most of them are gonna be coming back to us and saying we can't do it.
And you know, the bids are good through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Right.
Um, we, you know, we could go back and rebid all the bids again. You know, we'd have to mail a letter out to each vendor that we're, that we have a bid with and back out of the bid, that's a provision in the bid packet, you have to give them a thirty day notice. Um, but that costs money, it's very expensive to put that bid out, it's very time consuming to put that bid out. And so, um, and you know, you and I both know that the bids gonna come back in higher, they come in higher every year.
Yeah.
Because pricing persists. I don't know if there's an option to read, to go out and rebid is an answer.
Yeah. I say we wait till we get to that point.
Yeah.
We will start, you know, the process will start in March, so, so it's a long process to get these bids out.
Yeah, because if you go out for bids and you wanna rebid all your material, some of them could come in, so like, I haven't changed my, weren't you, why are we rebidding?
I think we're just gonna have to address each individual vendor. Which, we don't wanna bankrupt this company, he's a, he's a, he's a vendor within Van Zet County. We like to try to keep our, you know, we like to keep as many Van Zet County vendors as we possibly can, cause that helps our economy. Um, so uh, I think we're just gonna have to take it on as needed basis when they, when they contact.
Okay, any other questions or discussion, I have a motion, second, thank you Mr. Woodrum for being here. It's challenging times.
And, and I appreciate you just not saying, no, I don't have any, because that would have gotten us in a bind.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, that's what we're having.
Yeah, that, that's what you, yeah.
And Sandy, I assumed that you're gonna take that three dollars and add it to our budget, come out here.
No.
Maybe I missed it.
Yeah, you did. Yeah, I, I, I heard it loud and clear. Your, your presentation was very clear that if y'all and uh, so uh, we have a motion, second, any other questions, discussion? Being none, all Being none, all in favor of absorbing the three dollar uh, price increase. Uh, say aye. Uh, those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Woodrow. Item number twenty-one, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments.
These are twenty twenty-one. We're winding down. Uh, the next court, we'll probably do a, uh, just, just to be, next court is the last court. We're gonna be in fields out of twenty twenty-one. From there forward, all bills will be twenty twenty-two. And we'll probably come with, with a big budget amendment to clean the slate for us next year.
Okay, so if they're, if they're holding anything, you probably need to get it in. They better get it in or it's gonna come out this year's budget. Okay. Uh, got a motion by Commissioner West to approve the twenty twenty-one budget amendments. Second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-two, uh, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget amendments. Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner uh, Pearson. Any questions or discussion on the twenty twenty-two budget amendments? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-three, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government and approval of entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, do you have a comment?
I do. We have, uh, that team, uh, reports that are supposed to come in in the month, but we usually get that four, five at first. Maybe, which is today, but we got thirteen. So I don't know. Everybody, feeling better.
Is that a motion to approve the reports?
Absolutely.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions, discussion on the report submitted? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. At this time, that we will close the commissioners' court meeting. And uh, we'll take about a five minute recess to get everything adjusted, all the recorders adjusted. We've got a couple of items. We've we got the sheriff's office tied up. Probably need to take the, the sheriff's office first. So Sheriff, if you and Craig would, would you stay in here? Tonda, would I would, do you, I'd like for you to stay if you could for, for the uh, Sandy Kenny. I think that's it. Am I missing anyone? Oh, Chloe, you'll need to stay. And Jennifer. Okay?
Chloe needs to stay now.
Yeah.